Yeah, I call order the joint meeting of the York County School Board and Board of Supervisors for March 35th. I don't know, Mark, if you need to, what do you want to do?
I'll just officially say I'll call to order the York County School Board to our joint session with the Board of Supervisors this evening, so thanks for another joint meeting.
Great. Roll call, please.
Mr. Zerimba.
Here.
Mrs. Knoll.
Here.
Mr. Wiggins.
Here.
Mr. Reschak.
Here.
Mr. Shepherd.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Great. Okay, so this is, I believe, what, the second or the third? How kind of time flies when you're having fun. And this is really great, we've had some really good interaction. And tonight, now, you've already approved your budget, and as this is a routine we've gone through, and we haven't gotten to our budget yet, so tonight we'll be addressing several items that are all related to that. After we finish this meeting, those Board Supervisors then will go into a regular work session for continuation of our budget discussion. In the meantime, I will turn it over to Mark Carter and Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'd like to start off tonight with a continuation of the discussion that we had at the last meeting where Mr. Cross presented some information about the population projections and school enrollment projections. Since that time, our staffs have continued to work together. Tim, Tim Cross, and Dr. James, and others have talked about the enrollment picture as well as the situation with the proposed new elementary school. And tonight, Tim is going to present to you the results of that discussion, which is an agreement by the two staffs in terms of the timing for that proposed school. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tim.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Shepherd, Chairman Metford, members of the two boards. Back in December, we came before you all to talk about future housing development. You go ahead and put the first slide up there. And future housing development in the McGruder and Yorktown Elementary School attendance zones, and what it pretends for school enrollment, and the need for a new elementary school, which the School Board has been including in its CIP requests for the past several years. Following the two boards' direction, county and school division staff have worked together over the past several months to come up with a plan and a timetable, mutually agreeable timetable, for building a new school. I appreciated the opportunity to work with Dr. James, Mark Sheerheart, and James Lash at the School Division. And I know we're all grateful to the elementary school principals, Jane Koryatzik at McGruder, and principals and assistant principals, Jane Koryatzik at McGruder, Robert Knolls at Yorktown, Christina Head at Seaford, and Jennifer Goodwin at Waller Mill, who took time out of their busy schedules to show us around their respective schools, and so we could see firsthand some of the spacing, capacity issues that they deal with on a daily basis. The result of our combined efforts is reflected in the proposed CIP, which programs proposes funding in FY 2017 for design and construction of a new elementary school to be open in time for the 2019-2020 school year. So the recommendation is based on the following findings and assumptions. Next slide. There are over 1,500 approved future housing units in the McGruder and Yorktown attendance zones, and they will be funneling students into the system. A lot of this growth will be triggered, fueled by the Marine Corps Security Force Regiment Consolidation Naval Weapons Station, which is going to occur in several phases, beginning August 2015 through 2018, and is expected to bring over 300 households to the area and over 300 dependents under the age of 21. Obviously, not all of them are going to live in York County, but we are assuming that a good proportion of them are. In addition, resident births, as always, and resales of existing homes are expected to continue to contribute to school enrollment growth. Next slide, please. And altogether, we project that up to 200 additional students will be added in McGruder and Yorktown attendance zones in the next five years. Unfortunately, both schools are currently operating at or near their maximum capacity today. And the two adjacent elementary schools, Waller Mill to the north and Seaford to the south, do not have enough capacity to handle the additional students. Next slide, please. The comprehensive plan says that when we're addressing school overcrowding, we look first at shifting the attendance zones, then we look at portable classrooms, if it's a temporary situation. Beyond that, we look at adding classrooms, or if we're facing a long-term crowding situation where the capacity deficit is projected to exceed the minimum capacity level at that grade level for an extended period, we need to look at new construction. And this is the situation that we're facing in McGruder-Yorktown area. Hence, the proposed CIP project, $23 million in FY 2017 for design and construction of a new elementary school to open in September 2019, excuse me. You may recall, School Board's original proposal was to fund the design work in FY 2016 and with the construction work in FY 2017. But we discussed it, we decided that it would make sense to fund it all in FY 2017, which postpones the decision point at which the School Board would need to choose between the two school sites that are under consideration, as you know. Yorktown Middle School campus is one site, and then the Profford six-and-a-half-acre school site at the Marquee is the other one. And those two sites are currently being evaluated for their potential for a school building. Next slide, please. The, looking at it pictorially, graphically, this is the situation as it exists currently at the two elementary schools. The burgundy bars represent capacity, and the gold bars represent enrollment. As the chart shows, both schools are basically operating at capacity today. Next slide, please. By 2019, we project McGruder will be about 80 students over capacity, and Yorktown will be more than 100 students over capacity. Next slide, please. Building a 500-student school as proposed in the CIP would allow 350 students to be shifted out of McGruder and Yorktown, addressing the space deficiencies in both schools while allowing additional space at all three schools for future enrollment growth. Next slide, please. And this is the general picture of the situation as we projected in 2019 with the new school, assuming that we shifted about 350 students to the new school. And for McGruder and York, it's going to depend on how you draw the attendance zones, what the actual impact is going to be at McGruder and Yorktown. For our purposes tonight, we just divided it evenly and showed them both what would be the average enrollment, which is 584 students. We use 350 students as a target because the School Board's guideline for the elementary school, for elementary school size, is 350 to 700 students. So you could put more than 350 students in the new school initially, you just could not have fewer than 350. Should also be noted that the core facilities for the school, such as cafeteria and the gymnasium, would be designed for the maximum future capacity of 700 students, even though what they're proposing right now, what's being proposed is, would be a 500-student school. But with the core facilities designed for 700, so that if the school needs to be expanded sometime in the future, you already have the core facilities in place to accommodate it. Situation that comes up sometimes with these older, smaller schools, you go in to add classrooms, but unfortunately, the cafeteria is still built for the smaller size, so you're going to be having to stagger the lunch hours so much that, you know, lunch runs from about 10:30 to 1:30, it takes up, you know, most of the school day. So you avoid that problem if you design the core facilities for the maximum capacity at the beginning. The other thing to note is that designing the new school does not commit you to building it right away. The plans can sit on the shelf for a few years at least, if it turns out that the marine consolidation falls behind schedule, or enrollment falls below our projections for some reason. So you do have some flexibility there in the schedule. And next year, when you all are talking about the budget and the CIP, you'll have another year's worth of data on which to decide if it still makes sense to target September 2019 for the opening of the new school. And move to the next slide. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions you might have.
Yeah, there's a question. Don?
Tim, did you tour the new addition to Seaford Elementary?
Yes, we did.
How many more? I did, too. That's a wonderful new addition.
It is, it's very nice.
How many, how many students?
Well, I believe it was six classrooms, six classrooms. Six classrooms, so depending on what grades, you know, it would be 20 to 25 students per classroom. So somewhere between 120 and...
Were they overcrowded before that?
They were crowded. I don't know if they were overcrowded, but...
I was just wondering if any more students were able to shift to that school.
Well, I do know that, that the pre-K students who are zoned for Seaford, I believe, are currently at DARE Elementary still. So I guess there's an opportunity there to maybe shift them back to Seaford where they're supposed to be. Currently, Seaford is operating above its, I mean, it's, has excess capacity in terms of its instructional capacity, has more capacity than enrollment.
Ms. Knolls, do you have a question? I saw you, that you...
Did a cup of coffee, thank you.
Yeah, $23 million seems rather low for a cost of a new school, and the reason I say that is because I've been monitoring James City County's school growth over the last five, six, seven, eight years, and it seems to me their school costs are a heck of a lot more than 23 million bucks. How accurate are those numbers?
Well, it's not really, you know, we didn't get in, we started out with 23 million, which was the proposal from the School Board, but I do know that historically, for whatever reason, James City County's school construction costs have typically been higher than we've had in York County. I don't know what the reason for that would be, maybe one of the School Board representatives could tell you that.
The, right now, you said our average student population per class is 25, is that accurate?
Well, it's 20, 20 in the lower grades and 25 in the upper grades in the elementary schools.
So 20, you're sticking, you're able to stick to 20, only 20?
K2 is 20, and 3.5 is 25.
Yeah, I know, for years, we've talked about, you know, the goals, max goals, and so on. Are we, are we still at our goal, or below our goal, or are we blowing through the goal roof, so to speak?
I think, to credit this School Board and you all, we've managed to stay at, our average, I think, is right around 19 for K2, and right under, you know, 24, 23 to 24 for 3.5.
But that's the average, so we do have some classes that may have 28 students in the class.
In the lower grades, too. How many classrooms is this proposed school?
Well, capacity's 500. Number of classrooms, did we have that number? Yeah, we don't, we don't have that number.
But automatically, if I recall correctly, at least two classes for each grade, maybe more, for comparison's sake. Probably three, but at least no more, no less than two.
Three to four.
Three to four, that's right.
Three to four what?
Three to four per grade level. So three or four kindergartens, three or four first grades.
Is that new school?
Et cetera.
That's when you're designing new school, that's what you would like.
What you have.
Any other questions, Walt?
I think it depends on the school, depends on the school.
George, just to kind of follow along with what Walt's getting at, building this new elementary school and drawing down the other two, would there be opportunity or reason to draw down some of the other elementary schools, kind of balance everything out with the classrooms in all of them, or are you just going to stick to those three?
I think, I think chiming in for the zones for our feeder schools, for our high schools, sometimes we're limited on where the boundaries can be moved, because otherwise, we end up with splits, which we actually have some splits that deal with some students going to Grafton, other students going to a different high school. So we've got to be careful when we start moving boundaries and such, but we look at all options, and we'll ask, you know, when we get to that point. But we don't want to split things so crazy that it doesn't make any sense within the county.
Isn't that committee meet every other year, regardless, evaluating enrollment and boundaries? And I think it's pretty much every other year, if I'm not mistaken.
I'll have to ask Carl.
That's all right, that's yes or no.
Thank you. What we typically do, Dr. George, is monitor enrollment throughout the school year, and see where we look at potential growth in a school, and then balance accordingly. Over the past years, we have, say, the Naval Weapons Station, all of those students were zoned for McGruder. We looked at the numbers and made a decision to basically divide the Naval Weapons Station in half along Lebanon Church Road, and now we have almost equal numbers of students going to McGruder Elementary and Yorktown Elementary from the Naval Weapons Station. So this would require some attendance zone adjustments, because we know we're facing capacity issues at Yorktown Elementary and also at McGruder.
Tim? Okay. Just real quick, kind of summarize this, so we're looking at FY 17 budget, where we would put in about $23 million roughly. And then from that, the first year or so is the engineering piece, and then we go to a, anyway, we build up to an FY 19 opening. That'll be the grand opening, and parents and everybody will be notified of the attendance at the various schools as you shift students around, so that will all handle through you guys. But the, but the planning and everything will be in the, starting with the FY 17, that's the funding piece, so there shouldn't be any surprises coming through that.
Correct.
And I noticed on your school numbers, which you've been fairly accurate over the years, that it was like almost 30, like 30, I mean, this one time, I know, well, there's other issues there, but there was only like 30 student difference, so we're pretty close to capacity. I don't know how much delay, unless something would really significantly reduce the numbers, because I could see a hiccup where that, they would pile back in pretty quickly, and we didn't want to get caught behind, having to put students in trailers and things like that. It's never been a fun thing, so...
And one question, too, and I guess this might be a county staff question, but let's say that the growth sped up, I mean, to where we're seeing major enrollment issues, where we're now, you know, having to move in mobile classroom units, trailers to put kids in, trying to find places to put them. Once this project's approved and placed on the CIP, you mentioned that it can be pushed outward, but can it be pulled closer if we needed to?
Well, I mean...
It's a planning tool.
We'll have to see, yeah, and we'll have to see how things work out, I mean, FY 17, you know, right, or we're into the, you know, going into the 16, 16, 17 budget, so that'll be things that the staff will, and we will expect to hear from you routinely, so we'll, there won't be any big surprises. One of the things that we've been very aware of, although we saw the number of the new homes and the number of students, the growth in this county is well under 1%. I mean, it's just about .6, and that's very manageable, relatively speaking, and so doing these sort of things kind of helps, you know, it's necessary and helps us plan for that, so, okay. You got another question? Okay.
The 23 million is bricks and mortar. Now, have you done any calculations in terms of the added operational costs with respect to...
Teachers.
Teachers and support, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, we have, Mr. Zerimba, done some preliminary looks at that, and it looks like the range could be between a million to $1.3 million, depending on how many teachers we have to add on. Some teachers would shift from their existing schools, but then there would be some additional staff added, too, and that, so we don't know exactly how many teachers would be added on. But you're going to have the core responsibility of staff, like you're going to have to have a principal, you're going to have to have a librarian, you're going to have to have assistant principal, nurse, those kinds of folks are going to come with this building because you have to have them in the building. You're going to have the Virginia, the electricity cost, the utility costs that go along with the building.
Then it's just as an example, you know how much it costs you to run a school. I think that would be helpful to us to know how much it would cost.
We've done that. It's in the neighborhood of a million to a million and two, depending on the size of the school.
Million to a million and two is the cost to start up a school.
That's just the operating cost, that's not the...
Right, but that's for teachers, and that's for equipment, and that's...
Yes.
And I'm sure that varies by level.
Yeah, it does, it does. It's hard, it's hard to say, you can pick one school and say it's going to be exactly like that. What we try to do is we try to look at what are the additional new costs we're going to have to bring forth when we bring this building online. And there's an assumption that the equipment is going to be new, so the replacement of that will not have to take place in the current years, you know, at least the next three to four years, but after that, then you've got the replacement cost of the equipment, the maintenance cost of the building goes up.
But your 23 million covers bricks and mortar, period, not the outfitting of the...
It does not cover the operating cost.
That's right. Or the outfitting of the school. Does it include the outfitting?
Furniture will be included, but some of the supplies and things would not be included in that. You're exactly right.
Okay, what about computers and things of that nature? Is that all?
Right now, the estimate does include some, some computers, it does.
The wiring and all that's good stuff.
You know, two years from now, when we actually start looking at this building, it was pointed out earlier, the $23 million, is the 23 million going to be enough? We look at that every year. So next year, when we look at the CIP, we'll take another look at that and see, is it still a reasonable number, or do we now have to bump it up? Because as you well know, construction costs go up every year as well. I believe, if I remember correctly, Mr. Cross can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this, when we first put this elementary school in the CIP six, seven years ago, we put it in like 15, 16 million dollars. So it's grown over time to where it is today.
It has.
Well, obviously, we'll, as we get closer to it, we'll get better, we'll get better figures, and the board will be very interested in hearing, because that's a, you know, a school, buying a school's kind of expensive. Okay, any other questions? Point then, Tim, thank you very much for your presentation, and Mark, what's next?
Okay, if you could give me a second here, it'll bring up another... What we wanted to do next is to move into a discussion of the entire school CIP for fiscal year 2016. And as you recall from my budget presentation to the Board of Supervisors, two weeks ago, I guess it was, we had proposed for fiscal year 16, a roll-up of the school's projects that totaled $8.2 million, and you see that in the third column, the projects that had been recommended by the county in terms of funding, the various requests from the School Division. What we did to arrive at that proposed list of projects was to look at the, the total funding that had been approved in the current CIP for fiscal year 16. When the Board adopted the budget last year, what was the fiscal year 2016 amount? And that was $8.89 million. So we, we tried to develop a plan that would stay within that threshold of $8.8 million, and as a result, proposed that several of the School Division's projects be shifted out to fiscal year 17. We then, after presentation of this proposal, pardon me, our two teams met, the School Division and county staff met, and Dr. Shander asked for an opportunity for his team to get together and propose possibly some shifting around of those projects. And what you see in the fourth column is the proposal that has been developed jointly, which, which both of us support at this point in time, and that is to advance one of the projects that we had shifted to 17 back to fiscal year 16, one that, that Dr. Shander has indicated is a, is a particular priority, and that's the one, second up from the bottom, the Bethel Manor renovation, 300 slash 400 halls, which is a project that is estimated to cost $2.9 million. So shifting that from 17 back into 16 requires that something be shed from 16, so that we can kind of balance and stay within that, that target number. So what's proposed, you see, there are four projects that we had originally proposed for 16 that are now proposed to move out to 17, that's the York High Roof Replacement Phase 1, the kitchen equipment in five schools, the repainting of Tab High, and the Tab Elementary Metal Roof Phase 1. In addition, it's proposed that Yorktown Elementary roof be split into two phases, with 394,000 of that project being funded in 16, and the remaining 381 being funded in 17. So the, the net effect of that is to add $610,000 to my proposed CIP column for fiscal year 16, bringing the total bottom line to $8.8 million, which is what was approved in the current plan. Now, the other element of making this work is that we talked about, how can that radio project, radio upgrade for the various schools be funded? And what is proposed here is to draw $450,000 from the Impact Aid Revenue Stabilization Fund, which currently has a balance of 5.4 something million dollars.
5.6.
Five points, okay, pardon me, 5.6. So drawing that $450,000 down as a one-time expenditure still keeps that fund above the $5 million, and allows the radio project to be advanced so that it could be fully funded. This is a project that would be managed cooperatively by a team led by our, our radio expert, Terry Hall, and then members of the School Division staff. But anyway, that, that again, was a priority that Dr. Shander felt very strongly about, and so we support the proposal to, that's been developed to advance that project. So again, the fourth column here, the yellow highlighted column represents what we have arrived at in terms of a, of a joint discussion to fund the requests that are considered to be the most, the highest priority by the School Division, and we think it will, it will work in terms of the number that was, was adopted last year into the fiscal 16 CIP.
The pictures I saw of the Bethel, the school, I think, Dr. Shander, he showed us, I think it might have been, unfortunately, I think we may have seen them at dinner, and which were, they were pretty, the ones I saw were pretty amazing, that we, that the school had kind of, I mean, I don't know how you were holding, holding it together there, but yeah, that was, that was pretty amazing to see the condition of that, of the school. And so this is, I can see why that would be a priority, to get that renovation done. Now, the other part, too, about the...
Chair, if I could ask, you talk about, like, what is the 300 slash 400 halls? What's halls, what's the word halls mean?
It's, it's part of the Bethel Manor Elementary School, it's the oldest.
The halls, just the...
No, it's the windows, it's the, it's the, it's the infrastructure, Carl, you want to give them the details on that, but it's a very old part of the building.
Okay, you got a bathroom in there, it looks, I mean, it just, everything looks terrible. So, go ahead.
Thank you. As you may remember, some years ago, we made an addition onto Bethel Manor Elementary School. But the 300 hall and 400 hall was the existing school that was built in the 1960s. That's the part that needs to be renovated, not the part that was built in the 2000s.
It's just part of the school.
It's part of the school, not the entire school.
Designated area, okay.
So, I mean, if you have those pictures, that'd be great to pass those around, anyway, get them, we can get the pictures over to the supervisors, because nothing like an image there for an impact. Tied to that change is the, the radios, the 800 megahertz radios. Now, is that, is the plan is to do all the high schools at once, or you're going to do them in phases?
I think the goal of the plan, and I appreciate Mr. Carter's team working through that with us, when I first arrived in September, that was brought to my attention in a meeting, and I can tell you, nothing more important than safety for all, for everyone in this room, and so that's certainly a priority for us. The $500,000, I think, what's the gentleman's name again?
Terry Hall, Mr. Hall.
I keep wanting to say Tim. Terry is going to lead that project with us, so I think the first step to that is assessing all of the schools where we have... So I think the, the first step to that is assessing all of the schools where we have, have and don't have coverage.
And I want you, for the public watching, can you explain the situation as to what you're talking, referring to?
Sure. So in each of our schools, we have 800 megahertz radios. Every, we have, our principals have those radios in the schools, but we also have resource officers that have those, and we also have our safety folks within the county that have those. We have some, some coverage issues in our schools where they can't get reception. So one of our high schools in particular, Tab High School, has a larger gap in, within the school where they don't have coverage for the radio.
Like down in the halls or down in...
Correct.
And so are there large sections of the school where there's no, you can't, you can't communicate? Emergency response people cannot communicate with each other, so you have to run up down the hall or get to a, you know, run over the radio, try to get to a hot spot where you can communicate, right?
Right, that's correct. And I actually experienced that firsthand on a visit. I was walking with one of our assistant principals and we had a teacher who either collapsed or had, had a medical situation and he and I were literally running through the hallway so he can get the signal to call for, call for assistance. So certainly that's a priority for, for everyone in this room. And so I appreciate the flexibility with Mr. Carter's team. And I think that, again, this is another opportunity for our teams to work together to make sure that we get this right.
Okay, questions?
Yeah, to what extent does this system integrate with our existing sheriff's department, fire and life safety? In other words, are we making sure that we have a unified system instead of pieces that work independently, like apparently we've got a problem now? And who, where is the, sort of the communication central, if you will, who's, who's making sure this, the system in fact is a system that works?
It will integrate completely and Mr. Hall will ensure that that occurs. He's the, he's the manager of the entire emergency radio communication system for the fire and life safety as well as the sheriff's office. So that will be the, the purpose of having, having him lead that project is to make sure that that happens.
So is this the first time we're kind of incorporating the school division into this network or what?
Well, no, sir. They, they have communications currently. It's just there are some, there are some dead spots. And so the idea is, how do we address those dead spots?
It's managed separately, is it not?
Well, the, the, the principals have, have radios, the school resource officers, which are members of the sheriff's office, have radios. Those radios for sure talk to all the other sheriff's office radios. It's just a question of, will they, well, no, will they talk when they are in certain locations of the building?
Yeah, it's not an interoperability issue. It's an issue of like, like have a cell phone and you're out somewhere where you can't communicate in your house or something, you know, so.
My question, my question has to do with the fact that we did have excess funding in that Impact Aid Fund. How did we allow it to build up to that area without using it? This is where I'm coming from. Or is it just sitting?
Well, they have to ask for, they have to request it, one thing.
No, well, yes.
It's up to them to request it.
We've always had a limit of 5 million dollars in, in that fund. That's what it was designed to hold. And so there was excess there. I'm glad you're going to be able to use it, but I was just asking, has it just been sitting there?
Yes, ma'am, it's been in that account, yes.
So nobody asked for the money, so they didn't get to use it? So it's been earning...
How much is in there right now? 5.6?
5.54...
5.6 is what I have written down.
Okay, so you've got about 600,000 over the 5...
5.6, 600...
Over the goal.
We've, we've come over the history and Dennis can give some history behind it, but you know, we, we're very conservative with that fund because we know that if Impact Aid took a major hit from Washington DC, we would need that fund and every dime of it to, to kind of backfill our, our budget. But we pulled down a few times on it, but we know that it's there. So this is one of those times that we say, hey, this was a perfect opportunity to bring a public safety issue.
I have no problem with that, I'm just curious that it's been sitting there and not been used.
Well, it's been growing actually over the years, not just sitting...
That's right.
Not 5 million dollars sitting, but it's been accumulating over the years.
If I might add just a couple of comments to that, the fund does earn interest. The money is invested by the county treasurer and so the fund does earn interest. And the money got in there from a number of sources. If you remember, some of the folks in this room were around during this period, but in 1996, when the federal government shut down, they withheld our Impact Aid payments. And so in the middle of the year, we had to cut about 2 million dollars out of our budget. In that same year, you gave the school division an extra 500,000 dollars to bridge the gap too. Well, what happened was, then the federal government got over the shutdown and then the next fiscal year, they released all this money. So we ended up with getting about 2, 2 and 1/2 million dollars in one-time payments from them that, at the time, the county administrator and the division superintendent got together and said, hey, why don't we create a revenue stabilization fund so that if this ever happens again, we got something to fall back on? Now, what's happened is over the years, interest has accumulated on that and we've had other overages. And the agreement that we have is that any overages in that fund, in, in the Impact Aid area, go into this fund. So it's accumulated over the years. You did use this fund back, oh gosh, it's been close to eight, 10 years now, to put the synthetic turf in at York High School. That was about an 800,000 dollar project and that brought the fund down. But what's happened is the interest has accumulated and so it's getting back up. And that's why we feel very comfortable in using these dollars in this fund for this project. And if any other one-time projects come along, it's always a, it's, it's, it's an avenue to use and it is one-time money. So we do want to always keep in mind that these dollars are for one-time cost kinds of things. So it's, and the ultimate purpose of this fund is if in the event there's a shortfall in Impact Aid, we can program these funds in over a period of years so we don't have to have a 2 million dollar shortfall in a given year. We can do this over several years to phase in those reductions.
And just for clarification for the public, the Impact Aid is money received by the county from the federal government because of the impact of federal employees who live within the community. So I'd say it's very important. Unfortunately, I harp on this all the time, we never get the right amount. So they cut it short, I think last time, you said they had cut it short by 4 million dollars a year. And that's a lot of money. So our, our federal delegation keeps saying that they're trying to get them going, but money's tied everywhere, I guess. Any other questions on this? Okay, great. Thank you.
Did you have anything?
No.
Moving away from the capital side of the budget, we want to just run quickly through, first on my, from my perspective, a couple just refresher slides about the budget that we proposed to you. Of course, it's 133.4 million dollars. We are not proposing a tax rate increase. Our major areas of focus in putting the budget together were to address school funding to the extent possible, to try to recommend an employee compensation increase. And what's proposed in the budget is a 2% increase for county employees. And then finally, to fund the necessary increases in program costs and service costs as well as to continue to fund the, the capital improvement program and the cash that needs to go into that to, to make that program work. The, the new revenue growth that the county will realize, projected growth in FY16 is 950,000 dollars. And what's been proposed in the budget is to allocate 361,000 dollars of that growth to the school division, leaving 589,000 on the county side. The, the way that's broken down in the proposed budget is the 361, of course, to the, to the school division, 2% increase in compensation for county employees is 750,000. We also have an increase in health and dental insurance costs, employer share of that. And then the other various increases associated with departmental increases, the CIP outside agency requests. And then finally, realizing some debt service savings allowed some opportunities to, to fund some of those priorities that, particularly the compensation increase. Again, total revenue growth, new revenue growth of 950,000 dollars. Here's how it breaks out in terms of the percentages allocated to the various functions across the board. You see educational services, which does include schools and libraries, represents by far the largest percentage of expenditures in the general fund budget. And that is where we, where we stand from the county standpoint. Now, we realize that 361,000 is not all that the school division has asked to, to receive from the county. And we've talked about that and continue to, to have discussions about that. And Dr. Shander will, will mention some of that discussion in his presentation as to how that gap can be, can be addressed.
Do you want to...
Yeah, sorry.
Ask some questions?
Are there any questions from...
I don't know if you got a question, ask it to me.
I've got a question. Mark, go back to this slide here.
Okay.
No tax increase before, actually, no, I'm sorry, one, one after that, one after.
Okay.
Yeah. Can you just take a minute or two and go back to 2008 when the economy went this way and we had the, the great recession of 2008 timeframe? Sort of walk us through the pay, pay increases, if any, pay raises, if any, and if so, for a given year, what were they? So that our viewing public gets an idea about how long this kind of a raise has been needed? I know I didn't give any call this afternoon, but you're incredible knowledge.
Well, fortunately, my incredible staff prepared a nice chart for me to look at.
Good for you, all of you.
In FY10, fiscal year 10, there were no compensation increases proposed for county employees. In FY11, there were no increases proposed. In FY12, there were no increases proposed. In FY13, there were no increases proposed. In FY14, the board chose to approve a 2% compensation increase for county employees. And then last year, in FY15, the board chose to approve a 3% compensation increase for county employees. So to date, 5% since fiscal year 2010. And again, what's proposed this year, and my proposal to you, is 2%.
And that, none of those years included any kind of a step increase?
That's correct, yes, sir. That's right. The, the, the step, the step system has been suspended since that time. As you know, we have recently, you, you all authorized a contract with a consulting firm to take a, a complete look at the county's compensation system, to look at how to revamp that pay system. You know, frankly, the current system is, is out of whack and, and it wouldn't really make any sense to try to re-implement that at this point in time because it's just so old.
And what's the importance of, of this step increase concept?
The, well, the, the, the purpose of the compensation plan is to have a, an equitable way of compensating employees to ensure that the various classifications of employees relate properly to one another in terms of level of pay and to also provide some incentive for employees to stick with the county because of the, the opportunity for compensation increase based on the classic, on the, on the pay plan that's, that's ultimately adopted. So...
And cost of living.
And, and to keep up with cost of living. I mean, yes, some of, the, the, the steps in a compensation plan don't necessarily equal the same percentage every year. They vary, they could vary over the course of four or five years, different percentages. So in some years, they might not keep up with the cost of living, but the idea is to keep the, the compensation growth progressing at a reasonable rate.
So that, so that the first-year employee and the 10-year employee, or five or six-year employee doing the same job ought not be paid the same.
Correct.
After all the experience gained by that five or six or seven-year employee.
That's correct, yes, sir. That's right.
Mark, you mentioned cost of living and, have we kept up with the cost and living increases? I don't think so.
I don't think so, no.
I don't think so at all.
I think that was one of the sad, that was one of the sad things. If you just look at inflation during that period from about 2008 to 2013, we were, they just, we were, they were losing. I mean, the employees were losing. And, and, and it just kind of go along with what Walt was talking about, and the history, just remember the state and, and several of the communities around here, what, what did they have to live through? They just cut, they were cutting money. They were pulling it out. And what we were doing is fighting, trying to, trying to hold up at least a standard here in the county. So that, and we were, was doing it really because everybody around, it wasn't just the employees taking the hit, it was the, the whole, the whole country were taking a hit. And so it was tough times. And as you see today, that, you know, they talk about the jobs increasing and everything, but the, but the pay levels are nowhere near what they were. So world, there was a kind of a significant change of, of how we are looking and how we're using the money. So I know it's, it's, the employees, it's very important and that's why it was a priority for you guys this year, it's been a priority for ours, for our folks too. And don't we ever forget that 5% we had to deal with, that issue the state magically levied on us, thinking that was a good deal for everybody and unnecessarily.
True.
So anyway...
Mr. Chair, I've got a question.
Sure.
2% increase for health and dental increase for the employer, what about the employee? Is there also an increase there? Yes, sir, 2% is the, we've, we've tried to minimize that increase for the employees to the absolute extent possible. And so the proposal is a 2%.
Now, do we pay, do our employees pay the same percentage as the school employees pay as far as their health?
No, there, there are differences between the two programs in terms of the, the amount of contribution by the employee.
I would think, just thinking about it, is that they're all county employees regardless whether they work for the schools or for the county, it's taxpayers' money. And I would wonder why, to make it simpler and make it fairer, that everybody wasn't paying the same percentage. I know you're going to be looking into this and I, I hope that when both our teams get together, that we can come up with something that is a little bit more equitable as far as the health, health coverage is concerned. I think that, I think that would be very good.
I think it's, I think we're in agreement that it certainly is a topic for discussion of that.
It should be a topic for the supervisors for sure because we're, there's a significant difference.
Yes.
And we did make the change last year, last year, I guess, on our plan and we had a much, it was a fairly rich plan and we, we made those changes to, to help the employee and the employer and the whole division. So that was last year, wasn't it?
It was last year. And I think that we, we look, we look at the, we look at from a different direction, okay? And our employees that, you know, have not received compensation for years, that just got pointed out, some of the things that sometimes can retain that employee is a benefit. And so we have done our best to protect some of the benefits that we have, even with the state throwing the BRS at us, that we're finally finishing up this coming year, that we're getting ready to roll into. But healthcare, we look at it as we had to make some difficult decisions about changing our plan that more aligns with what the county plan is with Anthem. But I can speak for myself, it'd be the last direction I'd want to go to start increasing premium to the employee that hasn't had compensation seen in their paycheck for years because that is not the direction we, I would want to go and I wouldn't support that. Now, I do support collaboration between the two, but I would think that y'all could find ways to maybe reduce the employee share where we're closer to what we're doing than the other way around because that does create a benefit that benefits many.
I don't think the board is particularly interested in, in trying to reduce the benefits, which I understand, we fully understand. In fact, if you, if you go through there and you talk to the employees, you will hear often the idea that they would, in a, in a way, they would rather receive this, that salary-related, you know, issue where they would pay less over the year because that's just, that essentially is a pay raise, if you can take that. And, and people that want to get in, you know, or take a job so that they have the insurance, are able to pay for that insurance or get the health benefits from that, that's a significant motivation. And it's not just in local government, that's the same way in civilian life too, so, or outside of the government. So that's an important point. But that's something that the board supervisors definitely need to think about for, you know, for the coming budget discussions and if not this year, that we definitely need to look at it for next year. So, but anyway, you want to continue, anything else we can continue on with your presentation?
That's, that's it for me. And now Dr. Shander has some slides that he'd like to share.
Yes, I have a few slides this evening. As you know, our school board approved their budget last night. Our staff actually ran the copies of the budget over to Mr. Carter this morning and I wanted to share a few slides tonight as a review of our budget. I'll just take just a few minutes. The numbers in our total operating budgets, you can see, were just under 130 million dollars. We were able to decrease this number by a little over 600,000. We're also projecting an enrollment, as was stated earlier this evening, of an increase of 250 students. There's obviously many items in our budget. There are some that are not as significant in terms of overall dollars, but I wanted to remind the community and all board members this evening of our three main priorities, which again are staff compensation, transportation and technology. which again are staff compensation, transportation, and technology. So if you look at this next slide, just by the numbers, for compensation, this slide indicates the cost breakdown for licensed and non-licensed staff members. Our total there for compensation is $1.54 million. And then the next slide, this slide indicates the cost to restore a step for all eligible staff members who have lost five steps.
That's your, that's your standard of kind of.
Correct. And the total cost for that is 908,000. And then again, as, you've seen this slide before, this is our transportation slide. Again, we plan to utilize funds to replace buses over the next several years in order to get us on, get us back on track for our normal replacement cycle. So, the cost of replacing four buses is 400,000 with vehicle, vehicle and parts, I'm sorry, vehicle parts and supplies at 100,000.
Now, we've set up a fund for that, for that, right?
Well, that's, that's one of the proposals that I made to you all, is that instead of solely the technology fund at the end of the year as an opportunity to place carryover funds in, that also a transportation or bus replacement fund be set up, so that the school board would have the opportunity to request that that funding go into either or both of those, those accounts.
But yeah, it does.
It's a great thing. It gives visibility to that issue, which is, which is a significant issue, buying buses are, you know.
They're pricey.
Yeah, they're pricey.
So, the next one, looking at priority three again, is technology, you know, technology supports major classroom tools in our school division such as Aspen Benchmark and SOL testing. We need to address the life expectancy of our storage systems and servers. The cost for this will partially replace our storage units and servers and other related equipment. And then, I believe this is my last slide. So, in summary, you can see the county contribution request, increased request is a little over a million dollars. The county administrator has recommended 361,000, and we're, we have a budget gap of a little over $671,000. So, I could, we could certainly open up to any questions or comments.
So, what's, what's the, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, George.
On your technologies piece, I know that we were briefed earlier this week on the dark fiber that the county's using. Is, are schools looking at using, into that, tapping into the dark fiber to reduce your overall costs for bandwidth?
I'm going to have to ask Dr. James to speak on that. Is that a, we don't know?
Unfortunately, I don't have any information about that this evening, but we can shortly get that information to you.
All right. Thank you. Sorry for throwing you under the bus there, Dr. James.
It's your under the bus.
I have a question, though, George.
It's a brand-new bus.
But I have, I have a question that's related to that, because it's important, there's, because of new technology and things advancing, and George, probably you've done a little more research on this, but the black fiber is essentially, it's a closed loop within, it's a fiber within the school system itself. In other words, it's, or it just sits there. In other words, we're not buying Cox or any other fiber, we're buying, it's just our fiber laying there, right?
Is it fiber optic network that we're leasing or buying?
Right, it's actually, it's, what's, what's going on with the county side is a private entity is installing dark fiber, and the dark means it's not being used. Once somebody leases a strand or multi-strands, then it is illuminated, this is the terminology that they use, it's illuminated, and there are, there are computer gizmos attached to either end, which allows the data to flow through that, that fiber optic cable. So, what the county discovered is that by virtue of this private contractor putting in the, the cable and then allowing it to be leased, and the county installing the gizmos on either end, we can actually save not a great amount of money, but some money in terms of the, of the funds that were being used, used to lease that bandwidth from the, you know, your traditional providers that you know of, and the bandwidth capability increases by 100 times. So, it was particularly advantageous to get the, the library on that because of the increased use of the Wi-Fi within the library, so that the bandwidth went from 10 whatever it is to 100 whatever it is, and that substantially increased the capability of people to use those devices within the library. So, there are various other county buildings that are now interconnected by virtue of this private contractor taking the initiative to put this cable in the ground, and then the county arranging for the, the connections on either end. And there probably are some opportunities for the school division to eventually do that, as more and more of that cable is laid in strategic locations.
Is, are you guys in the school system taking advantage of cloud technology in reducing the cost? Or is this a question we should maybe?
Yeah, I would have to.
Where is Doug made when we need him? He's our IT.
I would have to, yeah, get our IT folks who can answer that question for you.
It just reduces the reliance on, you know, on standalone systems. And so, I think combining all the new technology, there are some, some big savings that I'm seeing in local governments through the Virginia Association of Counties and through the Virginia Planning District Commissions and the meetings and stuff like that, you're seeing more and more of these industries popping up, big ones in North Carolina, that are actually serving companies or governments here in Virginia because of the way they handle that technology and it helps reduce the cost. And I know technology costs have been a huge issue because of the cycle, and are you still using the six-year cycle to renew the schools, or are you off to that now?
Well, I believe we're off that cycle. I think that's part of the reason for the, for our request, yes.
Everything I read about the cloud, though, there's still security issues associated with that, so I'd go slow or certainly, I'd go forward deliberately.
Our tech gurus would certainly vet all of that. I would not be the one doing that.
I have a question, Chair, if I can ask you. On the first, on your first slide, projected increase in enrollment is 250 students annually. About how accurate are we with respect to projected enrollments? Anybody know?
I think they mentioned earlier that, Mr. Cross.
Tim is very accurate. I will speak for, I will say kudos to Tim.
We have good ears and we have bad ears.
Overall, Tim did well.
That actually, what they're, what they're calling an increase, that's an increase over the projection for this past year. The actual increase is about 150 students, as I recall.
So, why, why do we have 250 here?
Because we're over 100.
Because what they're calling an increase, they're comparing it to what we had projected for this past September.
For this fiscal year?
For this, for this past September. Right, the current fiscal year, which was, I believe, 12/4/20, and it actually came in at 12/5/30, something like that. So, the, the actual increase September to September would be about 150.
I guess, the reason for my question is, just was wondering, what impact on the $129 million does 250 or 150 or whatever, you know?
Yes, sir, I understand your question. What Mr. Cross was explaining is, our budget for fiscal year 15 was based on 12,420 students. Now, when we budget for fiscal year 16, we're budgeting for 12,670 students. That's the 250 student difference. So, to get to your point, Mr. Zerimba, is that now we want to capture all of that additional state revenue that comes with those additional 250 students. So, when we build the FY 16 budget, we capture all of those 250. Now, as Mr. Cross pointed out, we do have some of those students here this year, okay? We budgeted for 12/4/20, we're hovering around 12/500 to 12/550. Now, we will get that additional state revenue this year for, but it's not really included in our budget right yet. So, and to keep the budgets, I guess you might say, equal from year to year, we show the total amount of enrollment increase and show the total amount of revenue coming. That's the fair way to do it, because then you're seeing the full impact of the revenue from the state, which was reflected in those slides up there.
But, but if, in fact, at the end of the year, you do not have that increase, do you pay it back to the state?
No, they don't pay us for those students if we don't have that. We have had years where the budget, enrolled, budget enrollment was X amount, but it came in less than that. So, the state pays us per ADM, it's what they call the March 31 ADM. If our March 31 ADM count is below the projection, the state does not pay us for those students. So, and that's, that's why we watch this very closely. I can tell you the best example of that is at the beginning of the year. If our enrollment in the first 10 days of school is looking like it's not going to meet our enrollment projection, we don't put all those teachers out in the schools. We hold back teachers because we want to make sure we've got the funding to cover the cost that we have. And the vice versa that happens this year, where we had more enrollment than was projected, so we were able to hire a few additional teachers.
Okay, great. Any, okay, any other questions on this? Okay, Mark, anything else?
That concludes our presentations. We'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
We're going to go around, hang on a second. So, Victor, you got anything?
I have a question on this.
Oh, on this? Okay, sure, go ahead.
The obvious question is the shortfall.
Are you talking about the gap?
Yeah. What the school board will do, once you, as a board, make a decision, and I know there's been discussion between Mr. Carter and Dr. Shandor, but we would task our superintendent with bringing us options, once we have to go back and work with a gap. And, but I can't sit here today and tell you what those options would be, but I know there's been this.
We've had, yes, we've had, we've had discussions, we've talked about, again, you know, last time they were soft numbers, so to speak, and, you know, now we have the numbers. So, we've had some preliminary discussions, our teams have met, so we, we have some thoughts and ideas on that and strategies to close that gap. We're not prepared to present them tonight. We're going to meet after spring break and further review our options, would that be fair?
Yes. Good, okay.
Okay. You have anything else you want to add to that? Okay, good. Well, you want to just go around the room and, any comments or anything? Robbie?
I don't think so, this time.
I just appreciate the opportunity to meet together again and think things are working out well.
Don?
No, same with me. I appreciate you guys coming.
Walt?
Just wondering whether or not the county administrator and the superintendent think we have another joint session before we put it to bed, or any idea about that, whether, again, premature to?
I don't believe we will need to do that. I think at this point in time, it's a matter of our teams getting together and talking about how that gap can be, can be addressed and.
No, I think it's been very, very beneficial. Yeah, thanks.
Barbara?
Well, I just thank you for the opportunity of sitting down and discussing the issues that we face. I still plug in, this is, we're all about kids, so gotta do what we need to do for kids.
Ms. Noel?
I thank you all for joining us tonight. I think it's, it's been good, we've had, what is it, our second meeting? Our third meeting? All good things come in threes, and I think we've, we've talked about a lot of issues, and I think a lot of things are clearer, so thank you for all your assistance.
Cindy?
I would just like to thank you all, too, and I would also like to commend Mr. Carter and Dr. Shandor for their hard work and their staff's hard work, because I think this has been a very pleasant budget season, and I'm very pleased.
Good. All right.
Collaboration, I mean, I'll just leave it with that, because I think we've seen the benefit of, of what the two staffs working together can do and what it can bring, in a positive note, us working together, asking the right questions, and understanding what both facing as boards. We do public education in York County, and y'all deal with a lot of different things in the county. So, just having that collaborative relationship is beneficial to all. And I think the citizens, the comments I've heard from people is, y'all are talking, y'all are communicating, and you're working forward to move York County forward. That's what it's all about. So, thanks again. If there's a need for another joint meeting, by golly, give us a call. If it's a matter of just meeting with counterparts as we move forward, don't hesitate to give us a call or email.
Yeah, and I really wanted to, they foot-stomped the, the point about the staffs working together. It's, you know, that's where the nuts and bolts worked out, and they bring it up to us, and of course, we, we look at the bigger picture and, and put in the policy piece to it, but it's really the staff's been working together, and it's been really refreshing to see and hear the, the interchange that has taken place, and we're seeing the benefits of that. This really is great. And, and then the fact that we've met three times, three times, okay, is, is pretty, pretty amazing. I mean, we haven't done that ever that, that I can recall, and so, this time has been a deliberate effort on everybody's part to get together, and that communication is very healthy, and it's, helps us do what we're supposed to be doing, taking care of our students, taking care of our public, and, and making good decisions.
And having some common goals between the two boards.
Right, and it's easy to understand those now, so. Anyway, I appreciate that, and with that, I will end the session.
And I'll adjourn our school board meeting, and.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Chair, you have to adjourn your meeting.
Well, Mr. Chairman, traditionally, after the budget is released, there is a fairly brief work session where the board identifies the topics that you would like us to present in greater detail at future work sessions. So, that's where we are tonight with our request to you. So, that's where we are tonight with our request to you for you to identify the topics that you would like us to prepare additional information on and bring back to you at one or more of those work sessions that are on the tentative calendar. So, it could be...
We can do, I like the CIP, right?
CIP, the contributions to groups and agencies, those kinds of things, any, any of those kinds of things.
So, what was the contribution, what?
Well, your, your contributions that would be made to organizations and that's right.
Type of organizations, okay.
Traditionally, that's been one of the topics for a work session as well as the CIP.
I'd like to see that, Mark.
Okay.
That would be, we need to discuss that.
CIP, CIP is the one that I'm most interested in. I think we, it's time that we really look at what we have to do and start planning better about how we can afford to, to pay for what has to be done. And so, I think that, that's really on my, half of my lesson.
This is for a work session?
For a future work session, dealing with this budget cycle. So, we had to get these within the next...
Dealing with this budget cycle.
So, these are the things that, that, you know, like, uh, in the past where we had to deal with recycling or we deal with garbage or it could be any, any subject that you think that the staff needs to bring to us to address the budget items that Mark presented in his budget to us?
And you want that, like, tonight or...
Well, I, I think that the, the CIP and the contributions to groups and organizations, but, I mean, that, that could fill one work session. So, I mean, that gives us enough to work on for your next session.
I've got one. I know you've worked hard with the departments, uh, to come up with this budget, but what about constitutional officers? Is there any type of, uh, shortages or needs that aren't articulated in this budget that we need to get them to talk about?
I think that they will fund it at one day in the question of maybe some of the CIP items.
I got a call from Sheriff Diggs today that, and then we wanted to play telephone tag and we haven't talked. Just a series of somebody thinking if we all got it, there must be something...
It's the issue, it's the issue on, on, on the pay raise differential between the, uh, what the schools have planned for their employees, um, and what we've planned for our employees. So, there's, uh, about a one and a half percent difference.
Right, because of the step increases.
So, I think it's a good subject to bring up. Uh, there's two subjects related to that. One we mentioned tonight was the company, the, um, salary-related costs issue. There's about an eighteen hundred dollars difference between what the school, uh, pays, saves their employees and what, than what we do. So, and so, that's, there's a big, that's a huge difference and...
Was it the step increase?
No, no, because of the way the health insurance is computed.
The health insurance.
So, uh, so in talking, I've talked to Danny a little bit about that and, um, you know, the, the employees are, again, keeping in mind each, each employee's going to be a little different where their focus is. But if their focus is particularly in the health insurance side of it, uh, the eighteen hundred dollars is a huge difference per year that, uh, our, our employees pay that the school employees do not pay. So, uh, that's something, uh, closing that gap, I think, is going to be kind of a, a sensitive issue that we need to look at.
That's one of the reasons why we talked about having, you know, both staffs working together and come up with a common pay plan because actually it's paid for by the taxpayers, whether it be the county employees or the others. And it should be the same.
Well, not a pay plan, but the medical.
I mean, the medical.
Well...
Well, compensation, I mean, the medical, medical...
Well, the thing would be, would, would, the question to us would be that we would have to bring ours up, okay? I don't see them bringing, in fact, Mark made it very clear that they're not going to bring it down. They're not even interested in doing that. And, and I don't, I've sort of, I'd be honest with you, I would agree with him on that because the sensitivity, what we have cut over the years has been to close that gap of what the school wasn't getting in terms from state money. And that's, so riding on the back of the employees is an important, uh, is an important point. Now, you know, if we want to, we, I'm not saying, you know, we shouldn't look at it, but I guarantee you, you're gonna, you're gonna get ready for a, a, a real, you know, a real round of issues here.
What's driving the, uh, what's driving the differential?
Well, they, they have a different rate structure and a different philosophy as far as the percentage of the, the, uh, health insurance cost that the employer pays versus the employee. And, and there is, there, there are differences between our two programs. It's, I mean, I will say this, it's not going to be a quick fix kind of a thing. It's something that will...
Not this budget.
Right. It, it, it is a longer-term kind of a discussion issue. Um, it, it's something that, that I think that the, the, the team that we are proposing to set up to talk about the health insurance issue in general, that would be one of the subjects. Obviously, the reserve is one of the other subjects that they'll most immediately look at, but, um...
And also the step increase. In other words, if that's going to be, um, you know, the goal for next year's budget, I think that we ought to have some fairly early, uh, work sessions where we can, first of all, begin to understand, you know, going back to, to a model that, that we had to give up, what, eight years ago or whatever number of years ago. But if our intent is to reinstitute the, the step increase, I think we need to start off where, uh, let's make things sure we understand the, the concept and how we intend to go forward if we want to put something in place by next year's budget, which is, I think, the goal.
Well, the, right, the consultant will be engaged here in another, I guess, month or so, um, I think.
The work session?
Well, no, the, the consultant will start their work.
Okay.
And it's a, I think it's a six-month process for them to do all that they need to do. So, uh, yes, latter, latter part of this year, there would be an opportunity to talk with the board about findings and...
That's obviously an issue.
Again, that's not this, this, this...
I have another issue.
Let's let, I'll get Don here.
Uh, I talked to Mark earlier today about the same thing. And Mark said that we could possibly, without hurting ourselves, we could possibly give them, give our, our, uh, a raise of two and a half percent instead of the two percent. And, and I would suggest that we do that.
Well, and that would be a great subject that, for our, for a work session.
That's worth it.
That we do that during this budget cycle.
Yeah.
So, we can, I, I agree, that's if we can...
If we can do it, I agree with you. I think that's something we've been talking with.
Mark says we can do it.
Well, let's, well, Mark isn't who...
Let's see where it comes from.
This Mark.
This Mark.
Not this Mark.
No.
Okay, I was gonna say, what, what's this Mark?
Our, our Mark, our Mark.
Mr. Carter.
Well, they have less names, yeah.
He's ours, not the other.
Gotta keep up, Walt.
I was getting excited about, I said...
But I, but I think that's something if we possibly can do it.
Any other, any other subjects right now? I mean, this, this that we don't have to, you know, we, if we got more subjects later on, you think of something, put it in here because we have, uh, we have a lot of, a lot of, we got members, we got, we got teasies and Thursies to use if we need them for the budget.
Right, right.
And, uh, May, uh, the May, uh, like the approval date is the end game.
May what?
May 5th.
The, um, the next work session would be the April 7th meeting.
Okay.
I think we can probably get together the CIP and contributions for that.
Okay.
And then you have tentatively scheduled the 14th, the 28th, and the 30th. You know, ideally, we wouldn't need all of those dates.
I don't think so.
But, uh, they're, they're tentatively on the calendar, so...
Well, I'll be, I'm gonna be particularly interested if, because you're gonna be working with, uh, Dr. Shandor, Shandor, am I saying that right? Him, Victor, okay? You're gonna be working with him to figure out the gap, right? How to close, how that gap's gonna get closed.
Right. It, it's, it's really...
Shandor, there you go.
You know, it, it, it's really on their, um, you know, they're, they're gonna have to come up with some proposals as to how they, how they deal with that gap, um, given the amount of money that's proposed to come from the county. And I think he's got some preliminary ideas about how he would, how he would propose that to the school board, so...
However he does it, that, that's their business, I would think.
But, but we'll be, we'll be talking about that. And then obviously, you all want to know how that's going to be accomplished.
Sure.
Because we're talking less than, or right at about half a percent of their budget, half, half of one percent, excuse me. So, it's just, it's not a, a significant amount, so...
I, I think the key thing that they were hoping to achieve tonight, and I think you all, you all gave that to them, was some, was a, a basic assurance that the three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars was a figure that they could pretty much rely on in terms of a contribution coming from the county. I mean, that gives them a, a baseline to work with. If you had said, no, it's gonna be a hundred thousand instead, then that widens the gap and makes it more difficult. But, um, I think they were looking for that assurance. I think you all gave that to them, uh, in, in your discussions.
I think that number, uh, the number is important. And I, I go back to what Walt said last year. I just remember that because we were, we always like to compare ourselves with James City County. And James City County is, is, has more space to grow and they've been, they've been doing things, they got, uh, they've been generating more and more revenue. And I, to me, what it comes down to is sort of determining how wealthy, if you will, or how successful a community is. And, and again, it's all a function of, of a mix of businesses and, and activities like that. And, um, and if you look at James City County, it, you know, they were getting more money because they were being very successful in their business generation and it was working out. So, the community was considered growth like that, was wealth, and, and so, they had more money. Your county's a successful county, but we're not generating that kind of, that kind of revenue. And as a result, we don't have that much revenue being excess being generated. So, the three hundred, the three hundred thousand, or actually, I think when you got to working with the numbers, about nine hundred thousand altogether, but it was...
Revenue growth, right.
It, it shows that we're doing what we can with the money that we generate. If people want to do something that generates more revenue in the, in the county, the businesses, they're more than welcome to, we'll, we'll help them out some way or another.
Well, here's the irony, and, and since you brought up our, our neighbor, which of course, we were very close to James City County and the city of Williamsburg and for nothing else than the historic, uh, aspect of the three municipalities. But here's the irony. You know, they, according to their past administrator, their budget, ours is one hundred thirty-three million, one hundred thirty-four million dollars. Theirs is a hundred and seventy-four million, forty million dollar difference, okay? Population relatively the same. Profile demographics relatively the same. Pop, student population relatively the same. And yet, this year, the county administrator comes to their board saying, we gotta raise the tax rate by eight cents. We're, I mean, it...
Yeah.
Is that ironic or what? Because, and because the spending's out of control.
Why they, why they said they had to do it. No, they would do it because of the stormwater.
Oh, well.
And, and if you... And one of the things I thought was important in that is that if you look at our stormwater, uh, issues and how we address it, it's already incorporated in our budget. They're already in there. I mean, usually all you gotta do is open up the budget and you can see how we've been doing it for years and the things that we put on like stormwater, I mean, not just the stormwater, but the sewer systems, you know, like up there in Queens Lake.
We've had our enterprise fund.
Yeah, and, and, and that's millions. I would fact that one up there is almost, oh, a nineteen, twenty million dollar project. And those things get credited towards our TMDL and our future costs. So, uh, where a lot of these local governments that are our neighbors are real concerned, um, yeah, I remember last year Chesapeake set aside almost eleven million dollars to be able to get ready to, just to get ready to address their stormwater issues. Yet, we, yet we are continuing to meet all our, our TMDL and stormwater issues in our budget. So, the planning, how you, how you budget it and how you plan for it can really have a rippling effect later on in the future. And I think we've been fairly successful at that, so...
And if your, if your comments are accurate, what you're saying, we have an incredible staff that, uh...
Budget staff.
Certainly gets the job done. That's where the work is done. Makes the county administrator look good. The county administrator makes the board look really good. And even the county, the county attorney.
We're very pleased to hear that.
They're all looking good. Okay, um, so you got any other ideas? You can either pass them on now or bring them to us later, but we got you enough going for a couple of meetings now.
Yes, sir.
Um, has he got anything else for us?
No, sir.
Okay, what I'm gonna do is go around the room for comments. You got anything?
Nothing.
Don?
No.
No.
No? See if there was something I needed to pass on. We got that American Museum thing. Are you guys going to that?
What? Oh, the Revolutionary Museum.
It's kind of like the interim, interim...
Several dates in April, I think, right?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that was up there. And, uh, okay. So, other than that, uh, now we're going to recess to April 7th?
We're going to adjourn this meeting to April 3rd.
April 3rd.
That's this Friday, and I think it's at eight-thirty.
Oh, yeah, that's for the, uh, okay, the next meeting, uh, next meeting deals with the, uh, interviews that we have for the candidates. We have five candidates and they'll be, we're going through the interviews, a whole day operation. It's, uh, basically, we'll just go through that process.
You'll be in, of course, the admin building at, uh, on Ballard Street, uh, 224 Ballard Street. But you're gonna go for the public's information immediately into a closed meeting.
Closed session, so, right.
And you'll be in closed meeting all day.
All day, yeah. And so, as we do the interviews and, uh, out of that, we will make a determination whether, you know, how quickly we'll have either, have a, um, a, um, county administrator or we have to bring them back for another round of interviews or something. So, we'll, that's to be determined at that meeting.
You need a motion to adjourn to Friday, April 23rd at eight-thirty a.m. at, at the county admin building.
April 20th?
April 3rd, not 20th.
April 3rd, April 3rd. April 3rd.
23rd.
Okay, so Sheila, Sheila's made the motion based on what he, what, uh, Mr. Barnes said. And, uh, I don't know, we, yeah, I guess we got a motion.
The motion, motion made by Mrs. Knoll is to adjourn the meeting to eight-thirty a.m. Friday, April 3rd, 2015, in the county administration office at 224 Ballard Street.
Let me, let me ask a question. Is it, is it at eight-thirty or eight?
I believe you...
Because we added extra fifteen minutes.
Eight-thirty, I thought.
My recollection is that the board had, had said eight-thirty and that was the schedule that Mr. Vance had.
Okay, we're going with eight-thirty.
At eight-thirty?
Okay, you're good.
Yeah, okay.
Close meeting?
Well, you, you will open as a meeting because we have to do that. And then you'll have a motion to go into closed meeting for purposes of consideration...
Okay, we get, let's finish this motion. We finished with the motion? Okay, you got it?
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggins?
Yes.
Mr. Rishack?
Yes.
Mr. Zerimba?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.